Good evening. It is 6:30 on Valentine's Day, February 14th, 2023, and we have a quorum, and I am calling this meeting to order. This evening, we have with us Lorraine Curry. Lorraine, you get to come up front and stand by the podium and turn around while I talk about you. And Lorraine goes to Cedar Creek Intermediate School, and her favorite subject is math. So yes, I've already talked her into being an engineer, but she didn't fully commit, but I did plant the seed. And she's here with her teacher, Ms. Salaz?
Solis.
Solis, Solis, Ms. Solis. And Ms. Solis has their after-school Centers on Education, which most people here is the ACE program. And we have to be extra proud of Lorraine because she's doing it by herself. Her friend Skylah wasn't able to join her. But she tutors the other kids at school in all subjects. So if you have questions, she has answers for you. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise, Ms. Lorraine is going to lead us in the pledges. Lorraine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
She did great. Let's give her a round of applause. And Colin's going to take your picture. He'll stay right there. Colin's going to memorialize this. All right, let's give her another round of applause. Right there. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will remain standing, come forward, Mr. Burke. Everyone in town knows Dale Burke. He serves as our police chaplain, among many other things in the community, and he'll be leading our invocation tonight.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this night here, a night that we recognize as Valentine's Day. It was a time of recognizing love. But Father, you are love, and we just thank you that your love just covers this whole meeting tonight. Lord, your word says it, oh, how good and pleasant it is when brethren dwell together in unity. So, Lord, I thank you for the unity tonight. I thank you that each person, as they speak, their speech will be gracious and seasoned with salt. Lord, I thank you that we'll have, Lord, that there will be kindness tonight and order in the meeting. But, Lord, I thank you for each councilman, mayor, and the city manager, each one here. Lord, I thank you that you've called them to these positions. Thank you that they're faithful servants in all that they do, doing due diligence to make sure that this city is done orderly and the growth of this city is managed well. So, Lord, I thank you for each person on the council. I thank you for each person here that presents tonight. Lord, it will be done orderly and peaceful, and things will get done as they should. We just thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. All right, council, we're moving to the top of page two. The first item is the mayor's report, item 4A. I have a couple of things before we get started. Some of you attended the Farm Street Opry this month, and I just want to thank Councilmember Kirkland for emceeing. The city manager and I will talk about that in a minute. We were at an award ceremony. And I don't hardly ever, ever do this, and I think, I don't know if in six years if I have ever done this, but today is my oldest son's birthday. So I want to wish Taylor a happy birthday. And I'm, no way am I telling you how old he is because it's shocking to his dad and I both. And I also want to share with you that I met some folks from the Shelter Pets Safety Net, and they have free seeing and neutering for families that can't afford to do that. And they're working with the animal shelter, and we have added their link to our social services page. And if anybody is in need of that, I just wanted to share that with folks. All right, Colin, we can jump into the report. On the left, you'll see that Texas Tile Works had their grand opening. They now have two different locations on Chestnut. They're with Patricia and her husband. They have a great business that they have taken from her father taught her husband. And so it's generational, and they do some great work. And if you need tile work done, I would encourage you to check them out. To the right of that, you'll see why I was not at Farm Street Opry. That is Nancy Wood and Courtney Reed, who is the daughter of Aneese B. Reed. So that was really, really cool. And Aneese B. Reed was the person who really started the Main Street Organization. So Nancy received an award from the Texas Historic Commission in Community Heritage Development. And we were so pleased that they recognized Bastrop and Nancy's years of dedication to making Bastrop what it is. And then on the, Colin, there's one more picture there. We all had issues in Storm Mara. My husband and I lost a 50-foot oak tree. And you can see that it just, the root ball just ripped out of the ground from the weight of the ice. We were blessed, though. It fell absolutely the only way that it could fall that didn't destroy something or block the driveway. So I have a very sympathetic husband. That happened at about midnight. I jumped up out of bed and said, something's broke, something's broke. And he said, is rain coming in the house? And I said, no. And he said, go back to bed. So that's how we deal with things at our house. Okay, planned events. On the next page, I did go to the Alive After Five at the Gravity District. I'll have pictures for that next time. I did all of these other things. The Steel Away Home Play was awesome. I was there for what turned into opening night. And Councilmember Lee did a great job. And I have a picture for, at our next council meeting. I'll show you that. And I did all of the other things on this list. And on the upcoming events, there's really just a couple that I want to talk about. One of the most important ones being on February 18th at 2:00 p.m. at the Hampton Inn, Dorothy and Ed Skarnulis's memorial is going to take place. And I still miss Dorothy and Ed both every day. They were well-known and well-loved in the community. And between COVID and family, it's been, it's been a while. But both of them will be recognized at their memorial service, and that will be 2:00 p.m. Saturday at the Hampton. And I would, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that. And McCoys is having their grand reopening on the 23rd. And council, we will be back here on the 28th. But one other meeting, and this is for my friend Terry Moore. Council has said that they are all available for 5:30 on Monday, February 21st. And we will be having, council will be having a joint meeting with the Parks Board to make sure that we do our kickoff for our Parks Master Plan. So that's, that was not known when I prepared my mayor's report. So with that, we'll hear from council members. Let's start with Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes, ma'am. And it is Valentine's Day, and I'm just too tired. So I don't have anything to report this week. Sorry.
There you go. And our, the next person I was going to go to was Councilmember Plunkett. And his wife told me on Saturday, he's not coming to council. There's no way he's going to be able to leave the restaurant. So we know what Councilmember Plunkett is doing. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I have a negative thing to report because I didn't go to my Main Street Advisory Board meeting. I missed that, was late for it. But I want everybody to know there's a lot of things going on down in the Main Street area. There's some new businesses and restaurants that are about to open up. And then they've got a crosswalk painting in March coming up that's going to paint three crosswalks downtown. So that'll look really, really cool. So that's my negative thing, but it's a positive thing because they're doing so much stuff in Main Street. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did attend my library board meeting, the P&amp;Z meeting, as well as the DEI meeting. So I met all of the meetings since we last met. I do want to make some notes about the library. There's some good things going on at the library. They're gearing up for their 2023 Summer Reading Program. They're also asking for members of the community to share whatever skills you have at the library by volunteering. They need volunteers to make sure we have enough manpower for all of that reading. The library also, again, is participating in Black History Month via two displays. There's one for adults and one for children with books featuring black authors. And then they're also partnering with the Family Crisis Center to highlight books that bring awareness to teen dating violence. So a couple of things that you can check out at our library. I do want to make mention of a passing in our community, me being born here. Reverend TC Desche was a longtime member of the Bastrop community. He passed away on January 26th at the age of 88. He was a reverend. He was a teacher. He was my teacher. I got in trouble quite a bit in his class, which is probably why I'm so fond of him in the long term. But seeing him throughout the years, walking around Bastrop in this community. He graduated from E-Mail. He's part of Black History here in Bastrop. So just condolences to him and his family on that passing. And then Steel Away Home finally opened. Thank the Lord, Jesus. And we've gotten our opening show out of the way. I was told I was going to Hollywood, so I think that means I did good. And we have three more shows, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this weekend. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, they are getting pretty full for all of those dates. And I hope if you haven't come out, you will. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Kirkland?
Thank you, Mayor. So as Mayor said, I had a fabulous time hosting the Farm Street Opry. I brought 30 guests with me, and we had a good time. The crowd was a little smaller because of the cold weather that we had been dealing with in the prior days. So a majority-
So you brought the audience with you?
I brought the audience with me.
There you go.
In fact, you know, the part where you ask, who's from Bastrop? Who's from outside of Bastrop? Who's here because I invited you? And then they all started screaming. I said, that's my fan club.
And then they all sat down, right?
No, no, it was good. It was, it was, it was good. So I really enjoyed that. I attended the Cultural Arts Commission, where we discussed the gathering. So the gathering is this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. across the street at the Lost Pines Art Center. Come and connect with art resources. Learn about grant opportunities from the City of Bastrop through the Cultural Arts Commission and mingle with local artists across all sectors. There will be performances, presentations, snacks, and wine. And everybody is welcome, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday. And lastly, getting ready for the Parks Board and Parks Master Plan meeting that was delayed from during the freeze. And that's what we're talking about doing next Monday.
Great. Terrific. Thank you so much. And I also want to mention on February 17th, which is this Friday, there is the Veterans Bowling Night. So if you know of any veterans, please let them know that at 6:00, if they show up at Schulman, they can be a part of the bowling night. It's a heroes' night out. All right, council, we're moving on to item 4C, the city manager report. Ms. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Let me take off the mask. That's probably more helpful. I promise I'm not contagious. It's whatever allergies are moving forward. So we had a lot happen in the last couple of weeks, so I am ready to get started. So the first thing is, one of the things I told you guys during the interview process was I really like to touch base with the residents and hear it from the residents before I have to hear it from you. If I'm from the council, it's not a good thing. So starting on Tuesday, the 21st, we're having our first Sit With Still. My plan is to have it out in regular restaurants and off-site from City Hall. But this first one will be in City Hall. And there is no topic that's off-limits. We'll provide coffee and probably a few pastries. And all the residents are welcome, and it will be bilingual, as I am a Spanish speaker as well. We will put a virtual call-in option for those folks who are commuting into other parts of town that may want to call in during that time period. You have to request that link because I learned that Bastrop had some shenanigans during COVID, and we had odd people joining in, just random links out there. So super excited to start getting a pulse in the community and start making some really progress in the small things that make our residents' lives easier in the city. Super exciting stuff. Also, Bastrop County, the Smithville workforce has received a grant. And through ARPA funds, it's a $4.2 million grant. There is all kinds of trainings available. HVAC, plumbing, IT, and that's IT for healthcare, CDL, and welding. You've got to be a Bastrop resident, 18 years or older, but there's not a whole heck of a lot of questions asked. These are industries that need a lot of people in them. So please, if you know anybody, if you know a young person or maybe even not-so-young person who wants to change careers, who needs some free training, please, by all means, touch base, send them here. We can help you connect.
I want to clarify, because we get confused all the time when we're Bastrop, inside of Bastrop County, that a Bastrop County resident, all you have to do is live-
Bastrop County, yes.
It live inside Bastrop County. And if you're that and 18 years old, you're rocking and rolling, and it's free training.
And you could be less than 18. I believe you can be 16, but there's some school approval that's needed. Boards and Commissions, you'll see that item on your agenda. That is really for us keeping, number one, a good register of records, who's attending their boards and commissions, who's met the attendance requirements. I have had some issues, staff having discussion where some boards are having problems meeting quorum. So yes, we've got a lot of important work ahead of us, so super critical. The city secretary sent a form, and I guess we've received about 80% responses to everybody that has sent a form. And there will be some action we'll have to take based on some of those responses. And I will share that with the mayor, and it will be your next council agenda. We are starting budget. We've rolled the budget process back a month, so we're starting early. We're launching a program called Balancing Act, and this really allows the residents to participate in the budget process. They get to move the slider. They get to talk about what they want to see funded and how they want to see it funded. And we incorporate that into our budget comments and in our budget preparation, trying to be more transparent. Oh, we continue with development process improvements. We have a list of low-hanging fruit that, actually, it's, we're in a fruit punch already. We expect to bring some items to Planning Commission in March and then subsequently to the council. April is the bigger one. April has some pretty hot and heavy items, including some changes to the commercial code that have been requested through and through since my start here and even in my interview. So I think we're on a very positive path forward. Met with the residential home builders yesterday. They have very similar comments and concerns, although those are mostly related to process on what we're asking for upfront. And I think staff and I have come to some, at least, general consensus. And now the devil is in the details, and we'll work with legal to hammer some of that out. But we're making progress. The interlocal with the county, the 1445, I will touch on some of this as we begin discussion in the executive session. Also, very positive movement forward. Allen is drafting the final language as we speak to send over to the county, and that is proposed to be on your next agenda for February 28th. EDC, also, one of those things that y'all told me, hurry and get it done. Allen has also reviewed and sent off that shared services agreement. It has been sent off. We're waiting for comments and review. This is not the policy portion of it. We are still marching toward the policy portion, but at least getting the shared services agreement through would be a good check in the right direction. And then all the other stuff. You have a CIP update set in 2/28, and that's also when your quarterly report will come. We have made astronomical progress in moving toward a dashboard where you won't have a voluminous report. It'll be a dashboard you can go in and check as you please and check the status of items, the budget, our progress, our payments, any major projects that you want us to create on that dashboard. And then we also told you we have a payment condition index, and you asked for a rate model. How long it would take us to pay? What are the changes from the last time we had the rate model to now? That will be coming forward in the March agenda. Draft drainage study as well, March agenda, what we're going to do, our plans forward. That requires a lot of public comment because there will be, more than likely, some change in what is required at submittal based on those drainage studies. And then lastly, you received your financial policy, a step in the direction for process improvements. I don't expect you to have read it already, but please send any comments, share any concerns, like table of contents. Happy to look through it, talk with you one-on-one. Otherwise, it'll come back. And I'll tell you, we have implemented, and this is how and who's in charge of that. This is the fun one. So Mayor Schrader has her State of the City on March 31st, and it is at the Bastrop Convention Center. We are also doing a slight roast of Mayor Schrader. And I say slight because it is, it is six years of service as a dedicated public servant. And that, that role that she's in sometimes goes unthanked. And so it is not, it doesn't fall on deaf ears from somebody who's been in public service 20 years plus. So in honor of her time in office and all of the good things that have happened in the last six years and the things that are in place that are going to continue to pay dividends forward, this is a good way to say goodbye and thank you for service. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, please do so. We kept the tickets very, very reasonable so that everybody could attend. And it is going to have a night court theme, so be ready for some good comedy. We've got some great folks who are going to do the roast and acting. So not to mention a very, very, very good State of the City. Upcoming agenda items, man, it's full. I'll remind you that we only have one meeting in March because we gave you spring break off. So the February 28th agenda will be very full, and the March 28th agenda will be very full. So I will try to do what I can to prepare you. And as I meet with each one of you individually, try to prepare you in advance for those agenda items. And any questions?
I just have one. The link for the Sit With Still, will we add link?
Sure. Colin?
Okay, thank you.
And please, share that. Churches, I'll share with Rotary. There really is no topic off-limits. And if I need to bring a staff member, if I continue to have, let's say, police questions, I'll have Chief Stefanik with me. Or if there's fire questions, I'll have Chief Rosales with me. But the main intent is for them to have some FaceTime with me away from the scary part that is City Hall. This one will start at City Hall, but hopefully it'll be off-premise after that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Curry. Counsel, any other questions for the city manager? Everybody looks good. All right. There are no work sessions tonight. There are no staff and board reports tonight. Citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. Counsel, on our consent agenda, we have items A through F and some interested parties in the audience who are really hoping that they didn't really have to be here, but they're here just in case. Before we go to the consent agenda, I want to call to your attention that you have an amendment to item 8B. It is correctly listed in the agenda that says that the mayor is appointing David Carlson. Unfortunately, David's a familiar name, and so the resolution has a different last name. So that's the only thing that's changed. We're not appointing David Barrow. We appointed David Barrow to planning and zoning. We're appointing David Carlson to the Construction Standards Board. So because it was properly posted on the agenda, we can make that resolution change without having to pull the item. And now, counsel, does anybody want to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Consider, item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the January 23rd, 2020, Joint City Council and BEDC meeting and January 24th, 2023, regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-22 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the mayor's appointment of David Carlson, Place 2 of the Construction Standard Board as required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-18 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with HSD, Bastrop Pecan Park LP for Pecan Park Commercial Lot 5, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-17 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing a license to encroach agreement with Bastrop Grove Residential Community, Inc. to encroach into the city right of way to install irrigation, landscaping, signage, and mail kiosks for residential development as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a construction contract with JM Pipeline LLC for the Riverwood Water Main Replacement Phase 1 Bastrop CDV 21-0276 for not-to-exceed amount of $358,231, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8F, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, supporting the application for housing tax credits for the rehabilitation of the settlement estates located at 149 Settlement Drive, confirming support for the application, authorizing the city manager to grant a $250 and no cents reduction in fees for settlement estates to meet all program criteria, authorizing the mayor to certify documents and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion approved from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
She turned on. I was trying to look at all the lights at the same time. And a second by Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. You are not rude. It's Valentine's, go home to your families. Happy Valentine's Day. All right, counsel, we're moving on to item 9A. We've got a couple of other consultants in the audience for 9B and 9C, but I'm told that 9A wasn't going to, what was the expression? Take a turn to, where did you say to?
Left turn at Albuquerque.
Left turn at Albuquerque. We're not planning on doing that. So we're going to move on with item 9A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-15, approving the City of Bastrop, Texas, Library Collection Development Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Pearson is here as our library director. It's all yours, Ms. Pearson.
All right. I'm a little taller than most people. I received some feedback on this policy, and I am going to make some corrections and then bring this back to counsel. But I wanted to make sure that there were no additional questions. I can tell you what the feedback is, but does anyone have questions about the policy?
A little bit about what, what is the policy?
The one thing that I wanted to clarify, and I, and I think that it was brought up, and you're going to make sure that there's transparency and clearance for that. Because I had someone say, we made a complaint and nothing's been done. And I started with, who did you talk to? Because it takes a lot of people to make the library work effectively. And so, so everyone has clarity. You are the library director, then the library board, and then council.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So the policy is, it has been in effect. It has not been updated or approved by counsel since August of 2015. So it was time to redo the policy. Our policy that we are discussing today is our collection development policy, and it is how we collect all materials for the library. And it also provides for a clause so that if you do not agree with the materials that are in the library, we can reconsider them. We added some things to this policy to include our digital content, which would be all of our eBooks. It also has our consortium membership. We want to make it clear that we belong to this consortium. We do add to the consortium, but the materials, not all of them are ones that we purchased, so that needs to be made clear. It also includes our tech share and interlibrary loan program because that is also another way that people in Bastrop can acquire materials that we do not own at the library. Let's see. We did a lot of working on improving the readability and defining our purchases and requests from patrons and the gifts and the donations. I already mentioned reconsiderations. The other thing we added, we had a separate policy for adding our audiovisual materials, and so we put it all in one policy, just so that we're working off of the same criteria for all materials.
So, Ms. Pearson, are you, I understand that your intention is to take the, incorporate the feedback that you've gotten. Do you think that you are available, that you'll be able to have it at the next meeting? Or do you want to set the date as February 28th, or just leave it as bring it back when you're done?
Since the agenda is already very full, I think that I would probably consider waiting until March.
To the very full one March meeting?
Or the April meeting. Good. But yes, I did not want to do it very quickly. I want to make sure that we do this well and take the feedback and create a policy that everyone can be happy with.
Okay. So I'm happy to entertain a motion that it comes back when it's prepared.
Motion to approve. Oh, for it to come back on?
Motion to table, right?
Well, would we table? Would it be a motion to table?
It's that we're not going to consider it tonight and that we consider it at a future date.
I make a motion to table and consider at a future date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
So can we amend that to the future date of April?
Do you want to make it April, or just make it when she's ready and let her work with the city manager?
I have this thought in my head that if we don't set a date, it automatically means next meeting. I'm not sure that's right.
Not with us saying that she brings it back, because that's how it gets back on the agenda.
Yeah, fair enough. So second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any? Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I have a question. Is that okay if I ask a question? Okay, so I know that there's a, you said that the reconsideration, you're putting it in there, but are you changing what's already in here?
No, ma'am. No. But there were some additions that I received after it had already been to the lawyer and been to the library board, and then I recognized that we had forgotten something. And then it was also pointed out that I did not mention that you can appeal to counsel if you do not agree with the decision from the library board.
So it'll stay in there, but you're altering what's in here now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. That's what I was going to try and make clarification.
So there'll be a new document for everybody to look at?
There will be a brand-new document, yes.
So it's got to go to the library board.
Right. Well, I was just making sure she was saying. I didn't know if she was taking that out, or she was.
Oh, no, no, no. We're going to add some things to the reconsideration so that the steps are absolutely clear what happens when you ask to be reconsidered.
Clarification of that?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. All right, Counsel, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously with a 4-0 vote. We're moving on to item, thank you very much, Ms. Pearson, and y'all are so polite, but you can go too. You really can. All right, we're moving on to item 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-21 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a professional engineering services contract with Freez and Nichols for the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase two expansion, for a not-to-exceed amount of $371,118, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, in front of you tonight for your consideration and authorization, professional services contract with Freez and Nichols for a preliminary engineering study for the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase two expansion project. As you know, the city owns two wastewater treatment plants, number one and two, which are permitted by TCEQ for an average daily flow of 1.4 million gallons per day. And as you know, these two plants have reached a useful life and will be decommissioned once we can send the flows to the new wastewater treatment plant. City council authorized the approval of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase one, which is still currently in construction and has a permitted average daily flow of 2 million gallons per day by TCEQ. A preliminary engineering report developed in 2019 for another consultant recommended at that time the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant number three to be done in three phases, being the two primary phases with an average daily flow of 2 million gallons per day each and a third phase for 4 million gallons per day with additional treatment processes and various tie-ins to the overall facility and a possibility of a four-phase. The wastewater treatment plant number three is permitted by TCEQ, will expire in December 2024. Currently, we have these discharge permit limits, as you see on the screen, and this is just to make sure that the permitted facility would not negatively impact the receiving waters, the water quality of the receiving waters. The existing permit at time of renewal or permit modification may be amended with new and more stringent discharge limits. And this may mean that additional treatment processes or modifications of the wastewater treatment plant number three. The preliminary engineering report done in 2019 did not fully consider the population within city's wastewater CCN. And as you know, the city wastewater CCN is way larger than our water CCN. This preliminary engineering report assumed a population growth of an average of 2.8% per year, and we have seen the growth being way more than we had estimated. And we are estimating a little bit shy of 12,000 by the end of this year. Chapter 217 of the Texas Administrative Code requires that design of a new wastewater treatment plant to begin when the existing plant reaches 75% of the existing plant capacity and construction of the new wastewater treatment plant to begin at 90% of the existing plant capacity. The two wastewater treatment plants, number one and two, have reached the 90% plant capacity in 2021. Based on projected growth with the city of Bastrop and within city's wastewater CCN, it is anticipated that the wastewater treatment plant could exceed the 75% regulatory design threshold by early 2024. The scope of this contract includes a preliminary engineering study that will coordinate with the wastewater master plan project, which we are currently in negotiations with the terms and provisions of that contract, update wastewater treatability characteristics, and evaluate various treatment processes alternatives, especially if there is any changes on the discharge permit limits, and also consider potential reuse possibilities. Freez and Nichols will evaluate and make recommendations to the wastewater treatment plant number three expansion to accommodate growth, meet future discharge permit limitations, and also make progress towards reuse possibility. The deliverables include a preliminary design report with various technical memoranda documenting the discharge limits, design of basis of design, possibility of reuse, and treatment processes recommendations, and also 20% of probable construction cost. Just the way that we selected the consultant, we advertised for a request for qualification back in July of 2022. We received seven statements of qualifications. After we reviewed the qualifications and conducted interviews, we selected Freez and Nichols for the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase two expansion. And we have two representatives with us here tonight from Freez and Nichols, Kendall King and Kira Isles. The professional engineering services contract is for a not-to-exceed amount of $371,118. The funding will come from the certificate of obligation series 2021. With your authorization tonight, we'll submit a notice to proceed this month, and we estimate this scope of service be completed within five months. With that, we ask you that you authorize this contract, and I can take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. DeCarvillo. Do you have any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Rogers? Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I was curious on the one being at capacity when it opens up at 75% and us going in. Did we just miss the forecasting or the design of that and that evaluation that we did before?
Could you ask the question again? I'm not sure.
Yes. When we started the design of the plant, that was before a whole lot of things like the Tesla announcement and everything else. That's what she was saying. They were counting on a 2.8%. And once we got started, as things started happening, we thought we were going to have to start the design of the next increment of service. And they're using the LUEs and the Platts that we know that are coming. That's why they're trying to get ahead of it. So yes, things are happening faster.
I was just, it just seemed odd that as soon as we opened it, it's already at 75%.
It's kind of like the school district.
I know. You open a school and it's already full. So I get that. I just wanted to ask the question and see if we, how we missed on that, can we do better on this evaluation for?
Yeah, that's what this study is going to do, evaluate and see if we have to go with a larger capacity.
Because it's in 2 million increments, so there's four, and they were going to do one, do the next two, and then do four. And what she's saying is they may come back and say, you need to do four now and then do the two later. But that's what they're going to design, that's what they're going to study and make a recommendation on.
I'd be real surprised if they don't come back and say that, that we need all of that. That was the main thing. I just wanted to see what we had missed on that.
Crystal ball was not at maximum capacity, like our treatment plant. Councilmember Kirkland?
You mentioned a December 2023 expiration of a permit from TCEQ. What are the odds that that does not get reapproved? Or, I mean, what does that process look like? I look at that and say, oh, but maybe it's no big deal, so.
I don't, I will let the engineer speak more, but I don't see that not being approved. What we may see is a change in the discharge permit limit.
Right, and I saw that part of your presentation. I was more concerned with the possibility that it could be much, much worse than that, so.
Do you have anything to add to that? No, okay, no.
Okay. Is it assumed that it would be approved, given the fact that we already had one? Or like, how ministerial is it versus, you know, is it create some process where people are going to, you know, file objections and, you know, whatever that process looks like, or is it?
Really shouldn't it?
No, it shouldn't. It's just a renewal. And once we do renew, that's when they come up with the discharge permit. Or if we have to go with a different capacity now that two MGD, with a higher capacity, then they could come back at the same thing with the discharge permit. But I don't see them not approving.
My experience, and Kendall can speak to it, is that you're at much more of risk of having a permit and not doing anything. If you weren't designing the plant, if you weren't constructing the plant, then they start saying, wait a minute, we've given you capacity that you're not using. But as long as you're making progress in reporting, do you want to, do you agree with that, Kendall?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Kendall King, I'm a principal with Freez and Nichols. So the answer to your question is, when that permit renewal comes up, if everything was stayed static, your capacity stayed static and everything else, then what you might see is some increase in, or actually decrease in the permit limits because they're continuously trying to improve the water quality. So it's possible if everything stayed static that you might see some more stringent discharge limits. The situation that you're in is you're going to be asking for additional capacity. And that's one of the purposes of this study, is to determine what capacity do you need so that you can go to TCEQ and say, this is what we anticipate needing. Then we get that input back from TCEQ and say, at that capacity, we would expect your discharge limits would be this. And then that sets the stage for what process do we need to design for you to meet those future discharge limits? That's really part of the driver for this study at this phase because that really wasn't considered when the original concept was put together that you build, you know, block A and block B would be the same, and block C would be, D would be the same, or whatever. And that may not be appropriate because if you've got much more stringent discharge limits with the additional capacity you're going to need, we want to look at that treatment process and say, is that the most effective for your future needs?
I think part of what Councilmember Kirkland's asking is, like, can they on December 31st go, you don't have a permit anymore?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not, that's not a risk. But what we do need to understand is, what is that target that we're shooting for? What is that discharge limit set that we think we're going to have so that we can design the appropriate facility?
And the hesitancy in everyone is, no one really ever knows exactly what TCEQ is going to do.
Absolutely true.
So this discussion is laced with the word discharge. Are we required to have the permit because we're putting the discharge into the Colorado River?
Correct.
If we were, had the wastewater treatment plant, but say, sold 100% of the effluent and didn't put any water into the Colorado River, would we still need a permit?
Well, you would most likely still have a permit because it's really hard to get rid of that much water.
Right, okay.
So you would still probably be discharging some. But reuse is one of the other things we want to take a look at. And that wasn't considered in the previous study. And that's also another big consideration. And Mayor and I were talking about this before the meeting, is we've really kind of gone away from calling these wastewater treatment plants and calling them water reclamation facilities because that's a resource you just don't want to throw away. And so that will also dictate what kind of a treatment process that we use. And so that's why we say, let's take a step here, kind of plan out where we want to go long term, and then start you on the right path.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions I can answer.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Councilmember Plunkett. We're glad to have you. All right, we're on the top of page four on item 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-20 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving amendment number five to task authorization number two of the original professional services agreement with Freez and Nichols to provide materials testing services for the Simsboro Waterment Plant, wellfield, and transmission facilities project for a not-to-exceed amount of $215,775, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. So city council approved in 2020 an engineering services agreement with Freez and Nichols to do design and construction administration services. At that time, construction materials testing was not included as part of that contract. The reason why is because it's very difficult to determine the scope of services needed for materials testing when you don't have a complete design. You also may remember that city council authorized the approval of the construction contract of the GMP number one for the wastewater, the water treatment plant, the guaranteed maximum price number one for the well drilling and clear well packages. We already executed an amendment to cover the services for the materials testing for these packages. What we are asking tonight is the authorization for the materials testing for the GMP number two that includes the water treatment plant equipment and construction, the electrical and instrumentation, and the filter and chemical buildings. The GMP number three is being advertised at the moment. We have scheduled the bid opening for February 23. The packages include the access roads, transmission line, force main with station, wellfield, and final grading and paving. There are no additional GMPs anticipated at this time. Freez and Nichols has hired independent and certified laboratory for the materials testing services for the packages included in the GMP number one. And we will use the same laboratory for the GMP number two and three packages. The testing can include but are not limited to soil moisture densities, concrete inspection, and testing. Freez and Nichols will manage the subcontractor and coordinate the materials testing services, and will ensure materials used and verification of installation of these materials are of the quality as expected and required in the construction contract documents. The funding is coming from the certificate bond series 2021 in the not-to-exceed amount for $215,775. With your authorization tonight, we'll submit the notice to proceed this month. And the anticipated completion of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant and the scope of these services is estimated for January 2025. With that, we ask that you authorize this, and I can take any questions you may have at this time.
Good job. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Crouch?
I was just curious. On the budget, there was a lot of mention of overtime and additional time in doing the construction. And I know it's a not-to-exceed contract, so if there's overtime that's calculated in that we don't use, we'll get that money back, I'm assuming. But do you have any idea how much overtime was included in that? Was there a number provided in there?
Do you remember? I don't remember. I could provide a response to you at a later time if you'd like. I don't remember now.
Okay. I was just curious. I know it's a not-to-exceed, so we would get our.
Whatever is not used is, yes.
Use it. I was just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkland? Okay. A motion, anybody?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to item 9D. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-01. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-01 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, section 1.02.005, regarding termination of inactive campaign treasurer appointment, providing for repealing and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the February 28th, 2023 consent agenda for the second reading. Madam Secretary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is before you this evening to do a house cleaning and cleanup with inactive, well, they're still considered active campaign treasurer appointments. When a candidate becomes, when an individual becomes a candidate, before they can apply for a place on a ballot, they must have a, an appointed campaign treasurer on file. So they file that form with us. In order to deem that inactive, they must file a final report with us. If we don't receive a final report, that form continues to be active. So, in order to clean that up, the Texas election code has given the government, or the governmental authority to come and make a process to where I can implement that process to cause these forms to be inactive. This is not only for candidates, it is for committees as well. Because if there's a committee that files with our office, they have to file campaign treasurer appointments as well. And so this process will allow me to clean up campaign treasurer appointments for committees as well as candidates.
It's housekeeping.
Yes.
And we're not going to call out the people who didn't write their final report. We're just going to clean them up.
Right. Well, in the process, we are required to notify them that it will come before a council that will give them a chance to come in and file that final report if they so desire.
There you go. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Just for clarification, so whenever you're going to file these reports, if they haven't, it's just to cancel out their treasurer, not particularly their account of funds or anything else. It's just their assignment of treasurer, correct?
Right. We have no control over their accounts.
Right, just make sure everybody understands that it's just a treasurer appointment that you're canceling, not any of their funds.
We're not collecting the funds.
Right, or, or making sure that, we're not saying they don't have any funds. We're just saying that treasurer is no longer there.
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Councilmember?
And we don't, we don't do it like a week out, a month after, I believe it says a year.
Okay, just making sure.
Councilmember Lee?
Well, let me apologize for being part of the problem.
Well, no, as long as you're active.
You be so tired after the... But I think you just answered my question. What, what's the timeframe? So after the election is over with, they have a year, we, we have a year or two to fill out, send in that final form?
The process we're asking for, it will give, the, the campaign treasurer form will have had to have been inactive, or no, no kind of action on it for at least a year.
So for, so for clarity, if you're a council member and you're in your first term, you can leave your treasurer report open so that you have a treasurer on file. If you're in your second term, and you know that you're termed out and you're going to be off for a year, then you would need to clean up and close your campaign treasurer.
And then I think I heard you say that they, the candidate will be notified that they need to file it. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Plunkett?
I was just making sure we also stated the obvious, that this is not going to apply to anybody that's currently a candidate for anything or anything like that. This has passed over a year since they were an active candidate for anything.
I think she's got some that we could say over a decade.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Right, that's right. But if you're a candidate, you're required to have a campaign treasurer on file, so there's, yes.
Everybody cool? Okay, Councilmember Lee, any more questions? Councilmember Plunkett, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
Oh, a rousing second. I'm going to, I'm going to give that to Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're moving on to item 9E. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-02 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, article 1.04, regarding annual work plans for city boards, commissions, task force committees and advisory bodies, and providing for finding, act repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the February 28th, 2023 agenda for a second reading. Ms. Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item is related to annual work plans, which are an absolutely fantastic idea for your boards and commissions. It ensures that they are lockstep in what your goals, and we're all advancing the city forward in a particular fashion and speed. The only board right now that is codified to bring a work plan forward is the DEI Board. So this agenda would seek to make that a requirement of all boards and commissions, not just for a level of parity, but it really is of utmost importance to understand what the boards and commissions are working toward, to understand, one, is there any budget impact, and two, is there a staff resource impact? And I use the example of Planning Commission, for example. If Planning Commission has a work goal to work on three sections of the code this year, and council wants them to specifically look at the sign portion of the code, for example, does that mean a consultant? Does that mean extra staff help? What is that going to mean exactly? And by understanding what they're going to be putting forward, I am better able to manage. Any questions?
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, and they are all lighting up, so I'm just going to try to remember the order they lit up. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Okay, I have a question, because I, I said it's a liaison to the Historical Landmark Commission, and they normally only meet if there's an application. So, I don't know how a work plan, how would we work on a plan if we only meet, if somebody asks a question?
So I would expect the Historic Landmark Commission, their work plan, to say they revisit the ordinance every year. To make sure it's...
Okay, I was just curious.
Make sure it's still plugging along. Um, after speaking to the HLC this past month regarding an item that was in front of them, they have some serious concerns over some of the ordinance amendments they want to see come forward. So this would actually fall lockstep.
All right, thank you.
One of the things that we've always talked about is if there is a variance or something that comes to a board over and over, and it always gets approved, then we ought to change the ordinance so it doesn't have to come to the board. So that, to me, that's one of the things that we're trying to do. Um, all right, Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, so, uh, Ms. City Manager, thank you very much. Uh, I am in favor of this. Having said that, I would like to see some additions made to the ordinance. Uh, and I kind of have a list here. Uh, one is that, uh, I think that we need to provide the briefest definition of a work plan. Uh, it, it is kind of defined up in the staff report, but that'll get detached from the, the ordinance and, and won't be available anymore. So, you know, a definition of what that means, a template that the, the boards can look at and follow, provided by city staff. It needs a date where it's useful. For instance, if they do it in January, and they're going to put budgetary requests on there, they'll never get anything. So a date, and I'm, perhaps you could tell me when it would be most appropriate to have that, but June or July, or, you know, something like that.
I would think it would be within 60 days of the boards being seated. Because you have a time period, you have an advertising period, you see the boards, and then very quickly we get started on work, and before you know it, the budget is beginning, so.
Great.
And they're seated on October 1st, so I would be leery of and aware of Thanksgiving and Christmas. So you might want to say, like, by February 1st, they have, their work plans are due, or something like that.
Fair enough. So a date that fits with, you know, all the known constraints. Uh, and then an owner for the work plan. Uh, you know, in, in the, the boards and commissions ordinance here, it says, you know, the staff liaison will be responsible for preparing and posting the agenda. You know, so perhaps the staff liaison could also own at least bringing the work plan forward and saying, hey, guys, we need to work on this. It's due by this date, and, and at least driving the, the completion of that. And that's all I have. That would be my input.
Councilmember Crouch?
I kind of had the same thought. I should have unclicked my button. But a template would be nice, I think, for, that way you get a uniform set for all the boards and commissions, and you get all the information that you want, and all they kind of do is kind of fill in the blank, maybe. So there, there are already a lot of volunteers on it. If we don't have to spend a ton of time doing more volunteer work, filling out a, if they could do it, filling out a template versus doing one from scratch. You'll get all the information exactly the way you want it, and maybe that'll help out the process. So that was my only comment on it.
I think the intention is for staff to fill it out, and the board would be making suggestions for it. I don't think we're trying to create homework for the boards.
Not crying, not trying to create homework for the board, but certainly wanting to be a collaborative effort.
Absolutely.
I would envision the template have at the top the council goals, so that we're all working toward that. Of course, the boards are going to have ideas outside of the goals, but, you know, ideally, we're all marching in the same direction.
Um, and I, one thing that I want to ask, and I guess this might be a question for Alan. Of the kind of things that we're talking about, they don't seem huge. We could approve the first reading with those changes and bring it, instead of coming on consent, it could come back on the 28th, and if we still have issues, we can put it off. But we could get something done to move forward tonight. Are you comfortable, or are those substantive enough changes that you think we should bring it back for the first reading?
No, Mayor, I agree. The same thought occurred to me. I think these are minor enough that the spirit of the ordinance stays the same. You could approve this on first reading and have it come back next time on consent. And if there's any substantive questions, someone can pull it off consent at that time.
Okay. So we can put it on consent, or we can have it say, we, we want to bring it back and it not be on, right? It, it doesn't matter either way, and if it's on consent, it can, it's easily pulled?
It's easily pulled, because our charter does not require that both readings be on the exact same language.
Okay. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think my question's pretty much been answered. It was, um, I was thinking, like, for planning and zoning, how would they write a work plan? Because stuff kind of, you know, agendas come to them when they show up for the meeting. So would the staff be creating their work plan versus the DEI board? You guys are kind of working through that work plan together, and the other boards, I'm assuming, will probably start doing the same thing. But I would think, like, P and Z is a little different, or another, other boards that might have more staff working on the work plan versus the actual board creating the work plan.
I think, again, I'm thinking about a collaborative process. And for P and Z, for example, any amendments to the code where they continue to see maybe very volatile issues that come before them, that maybe in their work plan is a work session with the staff to figure out, to get to the nitty gritty of why things happen the way they are and why they are so volatile at the podium or at the dais. So I would expect more of some conversation to be had. Not that any one of these work plans is going to solve the world's problems tomorrow, but at least gets a dialogue going of what's expected from the boards and commissions, what the council expects of the boards and commissions, and how they're here to help solve problems.
And I was also thinking chapters of the comp plan might be a part of the work plan, so that, that gives folks an idea that you've volunteering for a board that's going to take on something besides just the, just the monthly meetings. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Lee?
That answered that question, but it prompted one more. Will there be some regularity of updates? I know there's no requirement on them, on any of the boards coming to council, but some form of an update on progress?
Dashboards.
Milestones?
Dashboards.
Dashboards?
Dashboards. That's my plan, to have, um...
So that they're all posted?
Yes, so that they're all posted. My, my plan is to have a place where you guys can look, from a place of transparency, what is everybody working on, and how is their progression toward those goals? It is very difficult to move this ship forward if we're not all rowing in the same direction. And if you don't even know what a board or commission is working on, it's even harder. And that's the position that I feel right now. We've got a lot of things happening. Some things are opposing factors to others. And it's really incumbent for the staff and the liaisons to really work together toward what are collectively the council's goals. That's, we, we forget that. They're the council's goals.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, you're good? All right, Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had one more thing. I added it to my list. I, I think this is kind of implied, but I'd like to also say in the new ordinance that council may add things to the work plan during the approval process, just so that it's written down and they recognize that that could happen.
Is that it, Councilmember Kirkland?
That's it for now.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Uh, I appreciate, almost, all my questions got answered. I just am seeing the need for a work group session potentially on the dashboard. Would that be possible in the next little bit?
Uh, it is once we, once we work out the kinks. So I'll just tell you on the dash...
It's got to exist before we can have a workshop.
So on the dashboard, you guys receive a quarterly report, and it's a voluminous document. We have found internally that we already have a software that can do, I would venture to say, 85% of that work, but it's not being utilized. The other 15% requires a little bit of programming with mygov, but not a whole lot. And so we're talking probably total $2,500 to turn what you receive in paper into a screen where you can go at any point in time to go check out what's happening. How much have we spent? What's that check register look like? Where are we with budget? Where are we with the work plans? Where are we with building permits? What is the average time things are taking? We have those tools that are at our fingertips right now. It's just a matter of bringing them forward. So we're working with the IT to help bring that forward, and mygov and ClearGov.
Sounds like that'll be a good workshop. So Councilmember Plunkett, you're good, you're golden? All right, I'm going to go to Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, because you've had three tries, so, and this is her first one. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for utilizing some tools we had, and that's going to make my life so much easier than going through these papers and everything else. And I was going to move to approve, if that's okay with, okay, apparently it's not okay with me.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, um, I'm going to read the list that I have in front of me, because it is the conditions for the approved with conditions.
You want to make that in a form of a motion that we capture about?
I was just telling Mayor Pro Tem Rogers why. I shook my head at her. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this ordinance with the following conditions. The first one is that it needs a brief definition of a work plan, which may include goals, activities, budget, things like that. That it needs a date that's appropriate for a budgeting cycle. That we need to specify who the owner is. We, and I'd like for it to say that council can add things during the approval process. And then outside of that ordinance, I'd like for staff to create a template.
I'd suggest that council can modify, because you may want to add, or you may want to take away.
That's fair.
So...
Yes, council can modify.
Yeah. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland?
Second.
Why didn't, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers had her line on.
I was trying not to be rude and jump in there.
Well, then I'm giving it to you. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Council, are you clear on what you're voting on?
Actually, I would like to make, instead of the, the council being able to make a, what'd she just?
Modification?
I would like it to say they have, to make suggestions, because these are volunteers, and we would like to make suggestions to them, to things, and not just tell them what to do. I just think it sounds much nicer.
Do you accept that friendly?
I'm sorry, no, ma'am.
Okay, I'll take it. Still do the second.
Okay. And it's coming back for a second vote, so when you talk about, we'll, we'll see how. I have confidence that our city attorney will come up with words that make everyone happy.
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, are you clear on what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to our last item and under individual consideration, item 9F. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-02 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, article 1.04, regarding annual verification of attendance and residency for members of boards, commissions, task force committees and advisory bodies, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the February 28th, 2023 agenda for a second reading. Ms. Manager, are you going to speak to this one?
I, I am. This is exactly the item that was up in the work session before, is we are talking about residency and tenure. Especially as we get through Planning Commission and zoning board of adjustments, if we're having difficulty making quorum, it's going to be difficult to carry some of these heavier items. So this item is really important, and there's an internal process that's missing, and that is turning in our, um...
Attendance.
Attendance to the city secretary and monitoring that. And also just stating the attendance requirement and what the process is for removal. It is not clear in the ordinance, to me, how that happens for each board and commission.
So Council, I'll let you know that I spoke with the city secretary earlier today, and my suggestion is that it become a part of the process, because we know that we've, over the last few years, we've established that we have the volunteer fair in July, that we do interviews in August, that we make appointments in September. They start on October 1st. They start on October 1st. We have a board and appreciation banquet in November, and in that timeframe, what we've talked about is perhaps in the April-May timeframe, make the request to confirm residency. Things change. People move, they sell a house, they live in a different spot, and quite frankly, as some of our development agreements happen, somebody may become in the ETJ, or they may now be in the city limits and they thought they were in the ETJ. There's all kinds of things that can happen. So trying to get into a rhythm of that so that if there is someone who no longer meets residency, that it's clear that once you no longer are qualified... And there's always exceptions, just the mayor can waive the residency exception and council can confirm or not confirm whatever the mayor waives. But have a way of having all of that in one place so that when we go for the volunteer fair, we know if maybe we have some additional vacancies because somebody moved and no longer meets the criteria. And particularly, I personally don't think there should be a rhythm to... If we are having attendance issues, we need to replace the person and not wait and do it once a year. But I don't think we should have to ask every volunteer every month, have you moved yet? So I... But I just think once in a while, it's reasonable to check on that. So that's where it's coming from.
Yes.
Again, it's kind of a housekeeping to keep us all cleaned up. Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, I think right at the end there, you addressed my concern. Yeah, I didn't want to wait a whole year before we figured out that somebody wasn't showing up. And so I think that's a... I think the living requirements, you know, checking that more than annually seems like too much, but... But yeah, do we need to have language in there that would indicate that we're not going to wait?
Honestly, and this... I'll ask the city manager, may have a different opinion, but it's my understanding, we've already got the rules and which meetings count and which don't, and how you get an excused absence. It's really a matter of we haven't been doing a good job of keeping track of the attendance, and the secretary... Our city secretary can't keep up with it if people aren't turning in the attendance sheets to her. So we're just trying to formalize all of that so that we can do a better job of, you've missed three in a row, there's a vacancy, and we can advertise that vacancy and start going. And I'm not trying... Life happens, and it's a volunteer position. I'm not trying to embarrass anybody, but the only thing worse than volunteering is you volunteer and show up for a meeting where we don't... We can't make a quorum, and then we can't get something done. So that's kind of what was driving it. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I want to clarify, after Councilmember Plunkett said, so we're thinking about looking at their residency maybe...
Once a year.
Once every year? So if they... Okay. And the attendance part, I think this is a good thing to do, because when we do put someone in that volunteer position, they're also taking somebody else, you know, there's several people that apply, and if you can't make it because you're busy or other things happen, we need to fill it with someone who could. So I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Kirkland, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. On the language where it says, "The city secretary shall send out notice to all members each March to verify residency and attendance requirements and upon such findings," and so on, what does it mean to verify attendance requirements?
So it appears to me that sometimes our boards and commissions don't understand fully what is required, who may excuse the absence, even if they're excused absences, how many absences equal too many absences.
Okay. So it's to communicate the rules?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that was not clear to me.
We always think it's nice if everybody understands the game plan before they're... When they're playing the game.
Yes.
All right. I have a motion and a second.